Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting in the city of Lenore for Tuesday, May the 16th, 2023. We welcome you here this evening. Councilmember Stevens will be coming in just a second. He got delayed at his office, but he should be right here. So we are glad that everyone could be here. We have a full council here tonight, almost in a minute. No, we will. So take a look about that. Glad everybody has been able to get back with us tonight. As we move forward, we've got several things to do tonight and talk about. Some meetings coming up, and we'll discuss that. I would like to stop one second and say happy birthday to my wife.
You should.
Today is her birthday, so I better do that, or I'd be in trouble. But she's had a great birthday for the last couple. We've been celebrating for several days. So anyway, she let me come to council tonight, which was good. Appreciate that.
How many years y'all been celebrating?
I'm not gonna tell you how old she is. That's not happening.
I just asked how many years.
A number. Yeah, I'll leave that one out. I'll be in trouble with that one. So anyway, but anyway, I'll let her know y'all said happy birthday. So, all right, as we normally do, we will get started in a second with our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. So if you would please rise and join us for that. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start tonight with a special recommendation.
Thank you for taking this, Stevens, to begin the debate.
That's it, at the bed.
All right, tonight we have a special recognition. Chief Phelps is already here. Join me up here. As we, tonight, we will be presenting a proclamation to our police chief for the week of May the 15th through the 21st as Peace Officers Memorial Week. And Monday, yesterday, as May the 15th was Peace Officers Memorial Day, but we'll celebrate that again today. How about that? Throughout the city of Lenore. So let's share this proclamation. This is in recognition of Peace Officers Memorial Week, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency of Lenore Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the city of Lenore. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazard, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Lenore Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore being resolved that I as mayor of the city of Lenore and on behalf of Lenore City Council do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Lenore and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2023 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in so doing, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Furthermore, I proclaim and call upon all citizens of the city of Lenore to recognize May 15th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made their ultimate sacrifice and service in their community, to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Witness my hand and seal this the 16th day of May 2023. Chief, thank you for all you do and for protecting us every day. I'll present you this, and I will turn this over to you.
Mayor, thank you, council. It's, I wish we didn't have an event like this to honor officers that have lost their life in the line of duty. But we do, and it's important to honor those that have. Just a little bit of history. President Kennedy in 1962 was the president that originally instituted National Peace Officers Memorial Day from May 15th. Congress then followed with proclaiming the whole week of May 15th Peace Officers Week. Last year, in just some numbers, last year we had a total of 246 across our nation that were considered line of duty deaths for officers. The top three categories, the top category, 82 officers lost their life to COVID-19 last year. 60 lost their life to gunfire. 33 lost their life to automobile crashes. And that was the top three categories for officers last year. There were nine officers from North Carolina that lost their life last year. Thankfully, we do not represent that. None of the agencies in this county represent that, but our heart still goes out to those agencies that have experienced that. Knowing a couple chiefs that went through it in the last year or two, I hope that's something I never experienced and we never experienced as a city, but it's a very trying and tough time. But it still makes me proud for the men and women that come in every day, knowing that this is a real part of their job, and there's a potential for them to come in and lose their life for the service of the city. And they come in day in and day out. And so it does make me proud of their dedication. And so thank you for council for honoring them and recognizing them. I know we have a lot to go on, and so I won't get long-winded, but thank you for taking the time to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, over here.
Yes, come on down.
No, actually it is.
You got that door figured out?
Chief, okay.
Mayor, chief, go this way just a little bit. And then everybody else behind us. Todd can't move by there. I'm losing you back there. You want to come over to this side, this side?
Yep.
There we go. That looks good. That's good. All right. Two without a flash and then two with. Ready, one, two, three, cheese. And then we'll do a flash. One, two, three, cheese. Good.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get something to sit down about that one.
We need girl team. Come in.
Slow work.
Come on, man.
It's a coup. You took my chair.
Takeover.
They all look alike up here, don't they?
Yeah.
Thank you, chief, again for all that, please convey to all our officers how much we appreciate what they do for us every day. I know we can't tell them enough, but we are honored that we're able to work together and do the things that we do. We have a great, great police force here, and we appreciate that. Chief just said a lot of officers couldn't be here tonight. They're graduating from BLET and other things are going on, or they're part of that instructors. And so that's good. They're out doing good things, growing. So we appreciate it. All right, we will move on then to matters scheduled for public hearing this evening. So our first one is a zoning amendment. This is number 1-23. We'll hear this to receive public comments regarding the zoning amendment number 1-23 to the Code of Ordinances, Section 1, Appendix A, Article 4. This is definitions as related to the retailing light and retailing intensity as submitted. Staff recommends adoption of the submitted ordinance. So I will open the public hearing. Our planning director, Hannah Williams, is with us tonight, and I'll bring Hannah up. So you can bring us up to date on what's going on, and then we'll open it for any questions, anyone to have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. The first amendment tonight is for the light retailing definition. It's sponsored by applicant John Moore of Brushy Mountain Builders. He owns a property that's zoned B6, and he would like to have a pawn and trade shop there. And so he's sponsoring this amendment to add pawn and trade shops to light retailing. When I reviewed the code, pawn and retail, or pawn and trade was only permitted in intensive retailing. And intensive retailing's definition also includes car lots, mobile home sales lots, heavy equipment sales, that kind of thing, where outdoor storage is basically a requirement of the product sold. Pawn and trade shops was, kind of didn't fit with the rest of those things. Pawn and trade tends to be a more light retail use. Things occur within the building. And a lot of similar uses, like gun sales, jewelry sales, lawn hardware equipment, is also permitted in light retailing. So it seems natural to put pawn and trade in with light retailing. And I'd also like to point out, Planning Board voted to recommend this decision to you, but they also made an amendment to light retailing to also just indicate that storage is not permitted outdoors, but an outdoor display, like during the day that the business is open, would also be okay. So. And there's a consistency statement in the memo that I drafted. Zoning amendments come with consistency statements, so I could read it for the record, or I could answer any questions that y'all might have.
Consistent with our comprehensive plans, what you're saying?
Yes.
I think that's all.
Alrighty.
That's right.
So do y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Hannah concerning this zoning amendment? I mean, it kind of fits the general business.
Well, and as she said, the primary, the primary products that a pawn shop tends to trade in, jewelry, firearm sales.
Right.
And the like are permitted. And this is, happens to be a consolidation of a lot of those in one location. So I think it just makes sense.
All right, the public hearing is open on it. Is there anyone who would like to address the council concerning this? Most everyone here are our staff. Thank you. And we don't, if you let you have some questions, you're welcome to ask at any time. But hearing done, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion.
I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that based on advice of the staff and the consistency with our plan, I think this is a change that, as I said, makes sense. So I'd make a motion that we approve the rezoning change.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue that we approve the zoning amendment change as presented from staff and the planning board. If no other questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to our second matter for public hearing this evening, which is a code amendment. This is number 2-23. This will be to receive comments regarding code amendment number 2-23 to the Code of Ordinances, Section 19-66. Modifications for major subdivisions as related to minor modifications and major modifications/plat amendments as submitted. Staff recommends adoption of the submitted ordinance as presented. So I will open the public hearing, and again, we'll call on Hannah Williams, our Director of Planning, to discuss with us. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So I will refer to general statutes 160D that were passed and made effective in 2021, where local governments can define by ordinance, by a local ordinance, that we can make minor modifications to development approvals administratively as staff, as long as we define what those minor modifications are. Our zoning code, when we did the 160D overhaul, put minor modifications in for conditional zoning and for special use permits. Those are approvals within the zoning ordinance. It did not get in there for major subdivision. A major subdivision is Chapter 19 of the code. It's outside the zoning ordinance. So just to be proactive, I thought that I could just use mirroring language to define minor modifications for the major subdivisions and define major modifications or plat amendments, what would need to come through council to make an amendment. So minor modifications would be anything to continue to apply with any applicable ordinances, anything necessary to comply with the conditions passed by this board or the council. And, but it could not increase the density. It could not change the conditional, or the conditions passed by the council or anything like that. So.
Give an example if you would.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Let's see. I guess the big one I'm thinking about is the Hill-Haven plat that was passed in February. If they were to come back and say, we're gonna do slightly different lot lines. We're going to increase Lot 18 and decrease Lot 19 size-wise. I could approve that without notifying the whole neighborhood. Or, but if they were to say, we're gonna go from 22 lots to 23 lots, that would need to come back through this board. If they increase the density, it would need to come back through this board. If they wanted to build a new road, if they wanted to do anything with water or sewer, it would need to come back through this board. Anything that would change the conditions of approval would need to come back through this board. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll stay on the red tape. I like it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, just save a couple of headaches if something is so small as changing the lot configuration by.
Mr. Rory, you have any?
I reviewed it. Looks okay to me.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions of Hannah? We are in public hearing, so if you have any questions, please put them up. Sounds pretty, I mean, it's a good way to do it, to tell you the truth. But we can move on without having to come back every time with minor modification things. So.
Right.
Okay, after no questions, I entertain a motion.
Close the hearing.
Close it.
Oh, excuse me. I will close the public hearings as we have no comments, and we will then turn it over to council for any, any motion or discussion, any further.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Item B, code amendment 2.23 as presented.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Thomas to approve the code amendment as presented by staff. If there's no other question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate your work on that and bringing it to us. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items. This consists of our minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Item B is the proclamation presented for the Peace Officers Memorial Week and Monday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day throughout the city of Lenore. That's the week of May 15th through the 21st. And Item C are professional services and consulting services agreement. This would be with McGill Associates. Approval of the proposal for a professional services and consulting services agreement with McGill and Associates for the water and sewer asset inventory and assessments as presented. So that's A, B, C. Anything you need to add about C at all? Okay. I'll open it up for any discussion, questions, or motion concerning the consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the consent agenda items A through B and C as presented.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Next on our agenda, a request and petitions of any citizens, anyone that would like to address the council. Again, most everyone here tonight are our staff, and we appreciate everyone being here. If there's anyone who would like to address, you can do so now. If not, that's fine. And we'll move on then. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council tonight, some items of information. City council will conduct a budget work session on Thursday, May 18th at 6:00 p.m., Third and Fourth City Hall. And additional budget work sessions can be held on Tuesday, May 23rd, 8:30 a.m. at the committee of the whole meeting, and also Tuesday, May 30th, 6:00 p.m. All work sessions will be held at City Hall. The planning board will meet on Monday, May 22nd, at 5:30 in these chambers. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th, in observance of Memorial Day. The American Legion Post 29 will host a Memorial Day service on Monday, May 29th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. on the square in downtown Lenore, and the public's invited to attend.
And by the way, all the council are invited to, they would want you to know you were invited through the American Legion.
And the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, May 31st, at noon at the airport facility. The Neon Bike Ride Event will be held on Friday, June 2nd, beginning at 8:30 p.m. at Lenore Rotary Soccer Complex. Riders will have the opportunity to decorate their bikes from 8:00 p.m. to 8:30. And I think they're giving away bike helmets the next day at the annual bicycle festival, which will be held on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. Also, on Saturday, June 3rd, there'll be a cruise-in from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in downtown. Lastly, I'll mention that today, good news, we executed a utility relocation agreement with Duke Energy to go back for the lines on Hospital Avenue. That's only $203,000, but they will be moving those lines out of the way, so we can hopefully get that bid sometime this summer.
Underground or not?
Oh, above ground.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Underground will be quite expensive.
Wow, we'll be terrible.
That's all I have for information. And then, yeah. And then I'll go back, and it's time to present the budget.
Any questions so far before Mr. Hildebrand presents the budget in just a few minutes? Anybody? Okay. Any other comments about anything? Okay. Yours spill up, boss?
I'm heading that way.
What I gave you is just a PowerPoint presentation, the full document, plus the PowerPoint being emailed out to you shortly, I guess. Josh will get that posted on the city's website. Pursuant to the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, I'm pleased to submit the recommended FYI 2324 budget for your review and consideration. If we go through this process, you see the pretty cover of the budget there. You'll be getting a little bit later. This all started, as you recall, back at a retreat in February. At that time, we went back and sat down and kind of gauged your priorities for the coming year. Those priorities you set, six priorities, continue efforts to go back and offer competitive compensation and benefits to our employees. Develop a new comprehensive plan, which will include a focus on neighborhood planning, such as West End, Whitton, and other neighborhoods, and also Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Continue to go back and develop strategies to support affordable workforce and market rate housing. Number four, continue to fund and support water and sewer capital improvements. Number five, continue to support minimum housing and code enforcement. And six, continue to evaluate organizational staffing needs and encourage succession planning and professional development. So our budget is based upon those six priorities you set at the retreat in February and also our planning session we had in March, as well as our, maybe the whole meetings we have throughout the year and the priorities you set during those meetings. The general fund totals $22,66,505. The budget's balanced with the current property tax rate. The current rate's 57 cent per 100. The rescue readiness tax is .85 cent per 100, so our total rate is 57.85 current rate. The budget does include a dollar increase in our solid waste fee, bringing that total to $12 per month, but all other general fund fees are unchanged. And I would mention that our solid waste fees are in line with the surrounding jurisdictions, much lower than Hickory and Morton. General fund revenues, 81% of our revenues come from property tax, sales tax, franchise tax. So 81% makes up those three pots of money. Other makes up the balance of that. Expenditures, you see by the pie chart, our main expenditures are police and fire and public works. And then following that, recreation, other departments. Grants. Grants are not included in the operational budget. As you know, this past year, we received a lot of money, probably the last several years. American Rescue Plan, capital and infrastructure funds, Park and Recreation Trust Fund, Appalachian Regional Commission, Rural Transformation Grant, on and on. These funds cover large capital expenses that go over several budget years. We will go back and, I guess, work with those funds in the budget, but they are not included in our budget. We do those in separate capital ordinance projects, project ordinances. The recommended budget contains no new debt and does not include any use of fund balance.
Yes.
Some of the events we had downtown. Speaking of downtown, the municipal district totals $236,900. It maintains the current rate of 20 cent per 100 as assessed value. That brings in roughly $33,000 to that fund. The city supplants the 236 with general tax, property taxes. Holiday decorations. There'll be additional decorations in the budget, unless some of you want to know about that. Water and sewer wastewater fund totals $10,726,980. That includes the 4% increase we approved earlier this year. We normally base that rate based on the Consumer Price Index. In February, that was 6.4%. However, we only decided to go back and look at rate increases of 4%. That's an average of about $2.09 per month per customer with 5,000 gallons of usage. Water revenues, about 65% of all revenues of that fund come from water. Sewer makes up about a third and a little bit left with interest and common fees. Expenses, water operation makes up over half the expenses of the water fund. Highlights. Our core services are continued with revenue projections based on realistic, conservative numbers, also looking at the economic environment we're in. Employee compensation, this is probably the most interest for our employees here in the room. The city, of course, like private employers, experienced workforce challenges with some positions in both recruitment and retention. We propose to go back and include a 4.5% cost of living for all employees. As we say every year, employees are our most important asset, and we want to go back and reward employees for what they do for us. Speaking of our employees, several weeks ago, here's the latest week where all the employees were involved. Other highlights, new positions. The budget includes six new positions. We propose a new purchasing logistics manager and a safety coordinator in public services. And then we have four new school resource officers funded in partnership with the Cabo County School System. So every elementary school, every school will have a school resource officer. Retirement contributions. This year, the, our mandatory contribution went up 0.75, or 75 basis points for the general employee and 100 basis points for our law enforcement, for our law enforcement officers. That's covered. Insurance, our health insurance premiums went up 5% while maintaining the current benefits. Our property liability insurance went up 17.49%. We're working on that right now. This says- This says our workers' comp went up seven point seven one percent. This is a four forty-five today, that's basically flat, so we work to get that flat. Street resurfacing, the budget includes four hundred and ten thousand dollars, an increase of ten thousand dollars to continue resurfacing our city on streets based on our updated pavement study we completed back in the spring. Also, we've included six, two hundred and six thousand, two fifty, in additional paving funds for strategic paving priorities such as repaving Hospital Avenue once the sidewalks put in. And also, I think we have Summer Hill included this year. We've had a lot of homes built in that subdivision. We have to go back with the final two inches of asphalt on those streets. Speaking of pavement, other highlights, the downtown budget, or downtown, we're going to go back in C E B G money once again to go back and help with the campus projects. As we mentioned before, there's other funding sources for that as well, and we're continuing to pursue other funds. Code enforcement, we have a hundred thousand dollars for building demolitions, foreclosures, and nuisance enforcement, and that excludes our personnel cost. I know that's one of the council's priorities. Technology, there's funding for computer and information technology upgrades throughout the organization to improve operations and also security. Environmental, the budget includes funding to continue with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments Phase Two Stormwater Management Program, where they oversee our program for us. Also, we're funding, as we approved several meetings ago, to go back, the COG will go back and provide comprehensive mapping of our stormwater system. That's included. Planning, the budget includes funding for a new comprehensive plan, which will focus on neighborhoods such as West End, Whitelands, and all neighborhoods in the city. That's funded, and then the budget funds all our debt obligations. That's our city for a big plan. Here's some of the highlights in the general fund. Vehicle services, we have a new, our HVAC replacement unit, a brake lathe, headlight adjuster in vehicle services. Streets, we got a service vehicle. Cemeteries, a new master plan, a zero-turn mower, columbarium, service truck. Sanitation, we have a new garbage truck that's just arrived, and we're funding that beginning July first. Also, roll-off rentable containers. Police, we're doing classroom renovations, include six new patrol cars, ten mobile data in-car radios, video enhancement system for, there's the mobile data terminals. Fire, classroom renovations, ten self-contained breathing apparatus, fire station two apron repairs, and also Lucas tool, and also another HVAC unit replacement. Parks and Rec, we have new doors for M O K Center, utility vehicle and mower, and technology upgrades. And there's Raff and Pickleball. Water and sewer, some of the capital items there, Roadhead's water plant, two pickup trucks, lobby renovations, and A W I E compliance improvements, water distribution, and skid steering mower, service truck, major pressure-reducing valve vaults. Utility maintenance, service truck, used forklift and trailer, and wastewater collections, spare pumps at Kincaid Station, upgrade pumps at Cypress Station, and a dump truck. Gunpowder, grinder pump and screen bar replacement, Lower Creek and Fluor repairs. And there's Smith Crossroads. So all that together really quickly is our recommended two thousand, three, four budget. Again, it's balanced, and I think it addresses your goals and priorities you set out for us. It does address everything we have, we never will, but we'll go back and continue to knock those down and move forward. I think staffs, we talk about daily, they go back and look for cost savings to maximize their resources every day, and I think that gets us as far as we get with our budget. You can do so many things because of that. Donna Bean, I want to thank her. Without her, this would not be done. She does a great job putting all these square pegs and round holes together to make things work. I appreciate our department directors for working together, knowing we're all one team, knowing we can't do everything, but together we can achieve a lot. Thanks City Council for the direction, and our primary goal, as I say every year, is service beyond measure, and we want you to come create with us. What I ask you to do tonight is to go back and schedule a public hearing for June sixth at six P M. in these chambers, and we'll have a work session beginning Thursday night at six P M. I'll take questions if you got them, if not, Donna will answer every one of them.
Any questions, anyone on the, on the council?
You should have a link to this, if not now, show them.
Do you need to call, we need to call for a public hearing?
We do, yes.
Hang on one second. Mr. Manager, I'll be out of town on the sixth.
On the public hearing?
There's a chance that I might. I've got to be in a business trip to Florida.
Okay.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Long as we, long as they got four of you here, we can vote. Unless you have any issues with it, I mean.
Yeah, we'll go through it Thursday, and if something changes, we can always.
Yeah, you can express your feeling.
I don't know. I may be leaving on Wednesday, I may have to leave on Tuesday.
Okay. Well, you'll have a chance to discuss all that before you go, and if there's any issues, we'll, we'll bring that up.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we call for the public hearing on June sixth.
Okay.
And also for our, do we need to call Scott for the budget meeting? Is that a public meeting?
We've already set that.
We already set, yeah, that's okay.
Motion is to call for public hearing on June sixth to review the budget.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to call for the public hearing considering the budget on Tuesday, June the sixth, as our, at our City Council meeting is presented. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
I was remiss not to thank Joshua Harris as well. He's had about ten versions of that today, so.
Yeah, well, it's time to thank everyone for this, the great, Mr. Hildebrand, thank you for all your work on this, Donna Bean, Finance Director, all of our department heads. Thank you all for your work. It takes a team to do it, and we have a great team here, and we appreciate all the work that is, that's gone into this. You've looked at every angle you can, we know, and we appreciate the, the savings that you're providing. We're still talking, we were talking insurance at four forty-five today and, and still have more to go. We still have some conversations about that going forward. We hope we reduce some things even further than we are, so we're, we're working on that as we speak. So thank you for a lot of, a lot of great work on this. We will meet again Thursday night, six o'clock at City Hall for the, on third floor, for the budget meeting to discuss these things, and hopefully everything goes well at my , we bear our last one, unless we need to meet again, so we'll see that until, until June. Any other comments on anything about that? Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Any report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I was trying to think, I don't think I have anything to bring up tonight. I don't have any board recommendations at this point. Any council members, anything that you'd like to, to talk about on that? Any members of our, that, anything we're missing that we need to discuss going on? We have had some great meetings with our master plan over the last little bit, still have some more coming up. Thank y'all for all your work on that and being a part of that, and council, which has been there as well, as we move forward with, continue with our master plan, and that's been, it's been a good process so far, and we want to continue moving forward with that. If nothing else to come before us, then we stay in the journey. Thank y'all.